Good evening. The Wayzetta Public Schools Board of Education regular board meeting for Monday, July 8, 2019 will come to order. And will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Eric Brown absent. Linda Cohen here.
Here.
Andrea Keen.
Here.
Anita Lucky.
Here.
Cheryl Palzine here. Chris McCullough absent. Sarah Johansson.
Here.
And Chase Anderson.
Here.
All right. Thank you so much and good evening, everyone. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda and the consent agenda. The consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of consent agenda items unless a board member or a citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed as a consent agenda item and addressed. The consent agenda items are listed in your board packet, and the recommended action is to approve the agenda and the consent agenda items. Is there a motion to that effect?
It's all moved.
Second. All right, and there's no discussion, and it's a roll call vote.
All right, Eric Brown is absent. Linda Cohen?
Yes.
Andrea Keen?
Yes.
Anita Lucky?
Yes.
Chris McCullough is absent. Cheryl Palzine, yes. And Sarah Johansson.
Yes.
Passes.
All right. Fantastic. And so now we have an agenda. And the first item on the agenda are reports from organizations. And I see that Mr. Westrom's making his way to the podium. We have one report this evening, and it's a very important report from our demographer, Ms. Hazel Reinhardt. And so, Mr. Westrom, if you want to make some introductions.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This evening, we have Hazel Reinhardt with us, and she'll be going through her enrollment projection. You probably recall that on June 24th, the board had the opportunity during a work session to go into great detail into the housing study, which basically looks at building permits and looks at each of our communities and what type of housing stock is anticipated to be built over the next immediate short term, but once again, over the long term as well. So Hazel did provide that information to the board. And at this point, we have had a couple of weeks to look at it. And in the aggregate, in other words, looking at our total student population, the numbers are still the same. However, we did do some minor adjustments between the individual elementary schools. So with that, I'm going to invite Hazel to come up and give the executive summary of the enrollment report for you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Hazel. Thank you. Jim graciously called it an executive summary. It may be a little longer than an executive summary. But, Madam Chair, board members, superintendent, my pleasure to be here. And as always, it's sort of exciting to report on enrollment in the Wayzetta Public Schools. So let's give a look here at some key findings. Things that you know, very rapid increase in enrollment, and that's driven really by substantial residential growth in the district. That open enrollment remains closed, and so in the fall of 2018, you had only 321 non-resident students. And what makes you very atypical for Minnesota school district, public school system, is that your market share increased over the past five years. And that's very unusual. You have a history of growth. If we look at the last five years, overall, you had an increase of over 1,300 students, but I bolded here that your resident enrollment crease was about 1,750 students, or almost 18% in five years, which is a very, very substantial increase. Non-residents make up only 2.7% of total enrollment in 2018-19. They were 7.1% five years ago at 748 students. So you can see the change that that has occurred. Now, if we look to the future, in the next 10 years, out to the time of 2028-29, in this round of projections, I've projected that total enrollment will be 14,428 to 15,460, which is an increase of about 22 to 30%. And if you reflect back on the past five years, that's actually a little slower growth than you've had in the past five years. And we'll talk a little bit about the reason for that. Enrollment increases because everything that drives enrollment is moving in the direction of increasing. It births in the district are increasing. Kindergarten is getting larger, although it's projected to flatten beginning in 2021-22. Kindergarten is larger than the previous year's grade 12, so you get that natural increase. Net in-migration continues. So everything is pointing to growth. If we look at the next five years, and I wanted to call this to your attention because it makes a difference in how you've organized your schools. In K5, in five years, we project 638 students or more larger than today. I want to say "or more." 638 is kind of the minimum. Middle school enrollment is projected to be 518 to 610 larger than today in five years, and then in 10 years, 800 to 1,100 more than today. And then high school is really an interesting case because in the short term, the increase is fairly small, about 300, but in the long term, in 10 years, it's 1,000 to 1,300. So it's a very substantial growth in that time period. The housing data support this. You've had a very rapid increase in single-family detached units, and these are the units that yield the highest student per unit. New units, single-family detached, yield about, they yield 0.72 Wayzetta Public School students. And the per-unit yield is higher for units that sell, single-family, turnover versus those that do not. So that all points to a growth as well. 80% of your students live in single-family detached units. It's important to always ask ourselves, you know, what can make these projections too high or too low? And the one thing that I want to call to your attention and be mindful of is that I mentioned we're projecting kindergarten as flattening out in 2021-22. And I have to tell you, it is not clear whether that projected flatness in Minnesota and suburban Hennepin County resident births will be a good predictor of your kindergarten. Because if residential development continues at the rapid rate and you continue to get young families, kindergarten will probably not be as flat as projected. The kindergarten grade one survival rate that I used is probably a little bit too high. It's been dropping rather rapidly. However, it's still well above what's sort of typical. So that leads me to say that even though kindergarten might be projected as a little too low, the survival rate may balance it out, that the elementary might come in very close to what was projected. There are other reasons, of course, a recession with slow residential growth, and you probably read as well as I did today in the Wall Street Journal, the issue of why we've had such a long period of sustained growth. And they put it really on what I would call information technology and just-in-time inventory, that one of the things that triggered cycles was a buildup in inventory, and then down, and now that has really disappeared. And the other thing is whether more students who are resident in the district would select open enrollment out or a charter school. Too low? Well, I mentioned the kindergarten, and also if you brought back more students who are now attending District 287. I'm showing you here enrollment for the last five years. I want to call your attention to that top line of the kindergarten, simply to, because it's so dramatic, in five years, going from 636 kindergarten students to 881. And then, as you know, down the diagonal is how we look at migration. So those 636 kindergarteners grew to 722, 746, 802, 839, until finally, 862 in grade five in five years. So you can see the speed of that. As we look to the future, it's important to look at these resident live births, and they are relevant. We can't just dismiss them. But what this table tells us is that resident births in Minnesota in 2017 were approximately what they were in 2002. So in in-between, they peaked in 2007, which was also the case for the nation, and that meant we had more births in 2007 than we had at any time since 1964. Get the centuries right here. And then it declined, and now, 2017, the Bureau of the Census says that that's the lowest number of births in the U.S. in 30 years. And that's been driven by two things, really. One is a very continued rapid decline in fertility, and also, we have far fewer immigrant mothers at this particular time, who tend to have higher, a higher number of children. And you can see that Hennepin County peaked in 2007, but suburban Hennepin, which is Hennepin County minus Minneapolis, peaked in births in 2015. So it was really different. And then, and the previous slide here, these births are on a calendar year basis. Here, we have adjusted for what I call a kindergarten pool, so that the student is age five by September 1st. So we look at 91 to 831, and births covering a third of one year and two-thirds of another. And you can see, these are births coded to the district boundaries. Now, these births have a couple of additional sources of variability. Out-of-wedlock births, parents can withhold that information from an address made public, and hence, the number percent of out-of-wedlock births and the percent who withhold are two additional sources of variability. But this, the set of numbers tells us two things. Number one, if you look at the number of kindergarten students for the corresponding years, you find that a very large number of your kindergarten students were not born here, that they're coming in. And secondly, I want to call your attention to the last three years in these numbers, because in the last three years, the number of births to district residents has really increased. And that tells us that the families that you've gotten more recently are earlier, younger in their life's family stage. So previously, you probably, most people who, most people who move, probably all their children were already born. Now we're having births. Now, one of the things that underlies the issue I raised about flat number of kindergarten students is the Minnesota Demographic Center has projected the number of zero-year-olds in Minnesota. And what we see is that the projection is actually higher than actual births have come in. So what I show to the left, the 70,000 numbers are the original projection, and then I reduced them, so they're about 98%, which is about the difference that actual is from, from the projection. Now, you can see how flat those numbers are, and if we ran them out to 2050, which Mr. Westrom said, "Are you sure that number's correct?" He said, "Yes, it is." That 70,000 never exceeds 70,600. So you can see, we're looking, projected at a very long time, a very flat verse. So I then use the suburban Hennepin County pool, and I calculated what I believe that pool will be, and the bold numbers are based on births that have already occurred, and then the lighter numbers are projected. And as you can see, this is very flat. Now, the assumptions I made for kindergarten was to use that low percentage, the most recent high you've had, which was 8.80, which did not occur in the fall of 2018, but in the fall of 2017. So it just tells us, we can't always say it's just going to go up every year, every year. And then I increased it at the same rate it's increased in the past few years and brought it to 9.31. And then the longer term, as you can see, I increased the share that suburban Hennepin County was of Minnesota births. So put a little growth into the underlying assumptions there. And if I take these percentages and apply them to the pool, the lower percentage, you know, basically averages about 925 kindergarten students a year, and the higher one, about 975 per year. And then if we look at migration, I have bolded grades five to six, that's a traditional transition point, and you can see that you consistently get students flowing into the Wayzetta Public Schools at that transition. You also get a fair number at six to seven. And then, of course, a lot of them in the elementary grades, and you'll notice that not very much in the high school grades. And then we look at that, besides migration, we can calculate it as a percentage, in essence, which is a survival rate. And I'm showing you here a low, which is an average of the past five years, and a high of the average of the past two years. And we want to average things as much as we can, because no one year may be a best predictor. Now, a couple of things also to bear in mind in looking at these numbers, you'll notice the K to 1 is at 1.48, which means a 4.8% increase every year. And you'll see I've put an asterisk there, and that's the most recent year, and I've used that in both sets of survival rates. It is still probably a little high. You had, we're up at 1.08, and it dropped to 1.06, and now it's down to 1.048. And it will probably continue to go down to, you know, 1.03, 1.025, something like that, which is more typical. Now, if we look at these numbers, you see the bold numbers at five to six, that transition. Everything north of those numbers varies in the two sets of survival rates. Everything south of that, if you look at them, are almost identical. So one way to think about these two different assumptions is that the high puts in more elementary students immediately. And then, of course, they roll through the grades, so eventually, they, they get to be in middle school and high school. But that's the major difference. So when you think about this, you're going to make a decision, you want to put in a few more elementary students or a few less. And that's kind of the way to think about the two assumptions. Then when we analyze the projections, what we find is that the kindergarten assumptions account for many more students than the migration assumptions. And what that always says to me is, if we need to, you know, focus our flashlight on something, we need to do it on those kindergarten assumptions. And then here are the projections, I say, these are numbers that we can admire, and you can see how enrollment grows for that period of time. And then I am showing enrollment here by the elementary school, middle school, and high school. And here you can see how, how high school grows in the last five years, how middle school grows more in the last five years. And the thing to remember is that middle school, the kindergarten assumptions have no impact on the first five years, only on the second five. And the kindergarten assumptions have almost no effect on high school. Because in 2028, only two grades are in school today, the 11th and 12th grades in 2028-29. So everything else is a function of those assumptions. And it's the migration assumptions that are really making the difference in the high school. And then, as Jim mentioned, and as you'll recall, we made projections by the nine elementary schools, with North Woods this past year having no students, which makes it a little trickier to make projections. But based on district information, we think that 525 will be starting out, and we have some sense of the grades they'll be in, some sense, I say. And then we know how many of those students have been carved out of other attendance areas. And this is all, we have to remember, it's all a little squishy. These are the best estimates we have, but, you know, they're certainly not firm, as though we'd had in an enrollment count. Now, what we, what I did here, and you'll notice I marked this revised, is that the first round, it certainly looked as though I had greatly over-projected Oakwood. And as I reflected on it, I understood why, because the survival rates were still the survival rates that had the portion of North Woods that was moved out. And so, in discussion with Jim and Kristen, I then took the survival rates of Birchview, Gleason Lake, Sunset Hill, and averaged those and applied them to Oakwood. And that, as you can, well, you'll see significantly reduced the projection for that school. In addition, I moved kindergartens, just a few kindergarten students around in the projections of kindergarten. Then I increased Meadow Ridge and North Woods. I weighted it a little differently. I had done an average of two years. This time, I took it, and I weighted the first year more heavily twice, so that we get a little bump there. Now, this is all based on the best information we have at the moment. It may not be what happens by October 1st this year, or certainly October 1st, 2020. But it's, I think it's the best we can do at the moment. And the other thing I want to call to your attention is, the district-wide projections made independently of the individual schools. So we look at the sum of the schools versus the district-wide, and you can see the difference. And in five years, the difference is seven students. So it gets to be pretty good. Early years, a little, little larger, but not, percentage-wise, not significant. Now, let's look at the housing for a minute. I talked about the importance of single-family detached, and you can see it here in the yield of students. These are, again, your, your students. Yield is fairly high for duplex units and split duplex, but as you can see, you don't have very many of them. Apartments really don't yield that many students. On average, about 0.11 to 0.15. So it's really, really those single-family units, detached units. There's almost a perfect correlation in this district by the age of the unit, that is, the year it was built. Units built before 1960 have 0.24 students versus those built 2000 or later at 0.89. If we look at it another way, and we look at units constructed in 2016, 17, and 18, the yield is 0.72, and that's a number that has been replicated over and over again in this district every time we've done this study. And then, if you look at those, again, single-family detached units, whether they were sold, turned over, or whether they didn't, you will see that if they turned over, they were sold, you, the yield per unit in students increases. Another thing this analysis showed us is that 32% of your single-family detached units contain a Wayzetta Public School students, and 41% contain at least one person aged 55 and more. So the fact is, the district is aging, like the population as a whole. It's, it's getting older. Here's what we have for projected development, and I note that this is as of April 2019. And I'd like to remind you that when we ask city officials for projections, they, they tend to get conservative versus what they might share with the district. So we don't show any townhouses or apartment units, although we are pretty certain there are going to be some apartment units. But you see 746, which, to informal information, is maybe a tad low. Then we break that out, and we see it by the elementary attendance areas, and you can see that most of those units are projected to be in the North Woods attendance area, but a lot of units in Greenwood and Meadow Ridge as well. And then I wanted to show you this because it's, it's so interesting, because the yields tell us a great deal about the nature of the population and school-age population in these various attendance areas. If you look at the yield, now, these are K5 resident students, for non-movers, you will see that Birchview and Gleason Lake, and Gleason Lake North, because it's separated here, Oakwood, Sunset Hill are all in the mid-teens. Okay? And those areas that are, are growing faster are all in maybe the mid-30s. Okay? Then if we look over at the units of movers, the units who are sold, we can see that in every instance, the yield increased, and the increase was smallest in Sunset Hill. But some of the others are pretty, at least 10 points. Look at Meadow Ridge from 0.38 to 0.58. Kimberly Lane from 0.36 to 0.52. So you can see the impact of that. And then we see on the new units. And, for example, in Gleason North with 21 units at 0.10, well, I wouldn't put too much weight on that, but in the main part with 50 units, 0.22. So it says that those new units are not yielding the same number of K5 kids as, as some of the others. Now, I take all of that information, the base number of units, the rate of turnover, new units, applying all these various rates, and get a housing unit method projection of resident K5 students by attendance area. And you can see here that we're projecting increase. Now, one of the great things from my perspective about the Wayzetta Public Schools is that students attend the elementary school in the attendance area in which they reside, which in many districts is not the case at all. And so that makes comparing these numbers almost impossible. Now, what we still need to remember is that the school projection made via the cohort method is for total students. The attendance area projections made from the housing unit method are for residence-only. Okay? And as you can see, the total school projection is higher, 6,212, or 17, 6,217, and the attendance area is 5,951. And that's a difference of 266. So we would expect the numbers to be positive when we compared school versus attendance area. And there are two attendance areas where that is not the case. One is Birchview, and one is Kimberly Lane. I analyzed these two areas, especially the school projections, and one of the things that is happening in those areas, very much so in Kimberly Lane, is that you will be graduating out fifth graders that are larger than the input of kindergarten. As you carved out some of that. As you carved out some of that geography, that's just what happened. That is true to a lesser extent in virtue, but also a little bit of that. So, that is why the school total is lower than the housing unit. Because the housing unit method cannot detect the difference in grade sizes the way the cohort can. And it can't detect the difference in incoming kindergarten students. But otherwise, I have to tell you, this looks mighty splendid. Now, when we analyze this further, we see that we have 5,951 K-5 resident students from the housing unit method. We have 6,217 from the cohort survival, all students, for 21-22. Now, if non-residents remain at 2.5% in 2021-22, as they were in 1819, we would need to add 128 students to the housing unit method to get a total enrollment. And when we do that, we get 6,079 total enrollment from the housing study, which is only 138 students less than the cohort projection. And in my experience, I have not seen anything this close in years. Now, it doesn't mean this is going to happen. But what it does say is if development occurs at the rate that we have projected for the next three years, which internally, we think is conservative, then these numbers, K-5, should be realized. Just says a lot of confidence to me that that will happen. And then we move on to middle school, and the tweaking did not affect the middle school because the, the schools feeding it did not change. And again, you will see that the district-wide projection compared to the sum of the individual schools is a very, very tight fit. And the growth at Central Middle School is astounding, from 1,320 to 1,869. The growth at East and West is, is far more modest and, and probably can be accommodated. Or, as I said the last time I met with you, that kids will be hanging from the rafters at Central with this kind of growth. And again, I, I would say that, that we can have very high confidence that those first five years, those kids are in your elementary grades right now. They are just rolling in, aging into the middle school in this period of time. So, that's basically what I have, to summarize it quickly. Still, very, very rapid growth. I want to have you have it on your radar, that these kindergarten projections may be low. I don't think they're too high. I think they could be low. That they may not be as flat as projected. And the significance of that is, is that it might put a little more pressure on your K-5 than you would think, if, if it has some elevation and curve to it, as opposed to being flat. And that's one thing we could play around with a little bit. But it's a remarkably good fit between the cohort projections and the housing unit, and that gives me great confidence at those K-5 numbers and at the middle school. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Hazel. This was fantastic, and we like a more detailed executive summary. It was really helpful to see the slides and to hear the information. Board colleagues, we did have a lively conversation at our work session, as, as Mr. Westrom mentioned. But are there any additional comments or questions? I think we're all just taking it in, all right.
Well, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
And as you know, please feel free to contact me if you have any questions, or if you want some further tweaking done. And then, the tweak numbers will be incorporated in the report, and we'll get a updated report to you.
Hold tight a minute. I think we do have a question. So, thanks.
Thank you for the information. It's really helpful. I wondered if you could just elaborate a little bit. At the very beginning, you talked about our market share increased in the last five years. Could you just elaborate on exactly what you meant by that?
Okay. What I have been doing for a number of years now is trying to get school districts, public school districts, to be sensitive to market share. Because Minnesota has become a competitive environment with state funding for open enrollment, and the number of open-enrolled students increases every year. The percent of students, the percent of all students enrolled in open enrollment increases every year. Charter schools are growing. And non-publics, basically not, but homeschooling a bit. So, what I do is I estimate the school-age population living in the district. And I do that by taking the enrollment of the public school and adding all of the non-publics, bricks and mortar, and homeschool, adding the public options, open enrollment, charter schools. If you have alternative learning centers, or in your case, 287, I have an estimate of those students, and put them in as an estimate of the resident students in the district. And so, I do that, and I get an estimate of the resident school-age population of the district. And then I look at whether that goes up or down, and what percentage of your enrollment do, do you get of that estimated school-age population. And by and large, in Minnesota, those percentages are drifting downward more dramatically in some districts than others. But to have an increase of, of about 2.5%, 2.6%, that's unheard of. I, I don't, I've not worked in another district where that has occurred.
Okay.
And the 83% is a very strong market share in the Twin Cities metro suburban area as well.
Okay. All right.
So, I, what, what it says to me is that your resident population is happy with what's being offered here, and the experience their students have.
Okay. Well, that's nice to hear. Okay. Well, we do reserve the right to, to contact you, and we'll work with Mr. Westrom and Ms. Tolleson. I'm sure there'll be additional questions. Mr. Westrom, do you have any additional comments?
Yep. The only comments I'd like to make is I'd like to thank Kristin Tolleson for the detailed work that she did, and worked closely with Hazel. You have been working together on this project for three to four months, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
And then, once again, you probably recall that Kristin began a census mailing to get a better handle on her zero-to-five-year-old population within the district, and that actually has served its purpose very well. So, thank you, Hazel, and thank you to Kristin.
Thank you both. All right. So, after that, the next item on our agenda would be recognitions. And we will resume our recognitions, including honoring the June Employee of the Month in September. So, that brings us to a student curriculum presentation. And as we talk about growth and excitement, it's fun to see that our student curriculum presentation is, in fact, from Northwoods. And so, Principal Berg and Student Support Specialist Paul, we welcome you to the podium. And, yeah, take it away.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us tonight. Ashley and I are very excited to be here. I ran into Dr. Anderson numerous times this school year, and he would frequently ask me one question, and that was, "Are you having fun?" And it was such a great question, because it always made me smile. And I have to say, this experience has been just wonderful. From selecting the staff, to meeting the parents and the students that will be coming to Northwoods, to planning for the opening of the school at the beginning of the year. So, those are the things Ashley and I are going to share with you this evening. We opened the voluntary transfer process in late December to current Wayzetta staff members. And after conducting interviews, we had filled over 90% of our openings at Northwoods. Our goal was to create a balanced, strong team at Northwoods, but it was also not to disrupt the balance at any of the other schools in Wayzetta. So, we were very cognizant of taking some people from many different buildings, but not taking too many. So, my colleagues would still be speaking to me at the end of the process. We ended up hiring teachers from 11 different schools in the building, or in the district. And we have since filled the open positions with candidates from outside the district.
So, on May 1st, we had the opportunity to have all of the staff members, teaching staff members, together for a planning day. We were at District 287, and it was, the room was filled with excitement and lots of high energy. We had the opportunity before May 1st to take the Insights survey, to kind of see how are we going to fit together as a staff. And so, we had our results given to us that day, and we were able to see visually where everybody stands, and really start to put the pieces together of how are we going to work together to, to make this the best that it can be for students. And so, the outcome of that was lots of sharing of information. Teams were eager to get together, again, outside of the May 1st meeting, and kind of just starting to plant those seeds.
In a quick enrollment update, we were originally slated to have about 475 students. And I checked in Skyward this morning, and we are at 531 today. So, we will continue to closely monitor our numbers over the summer and make adjustments as necessary as we go through the process. This winter, I had the opportunity to visit the PTAs of Oakwood and Greenwood and Meadow Ridge. It was a great opportunity to meet parents, answer questions, give them an update on the building. It was also a very important way for me to get a better understanding of issues that were very important to them as we move forward. I mean, think a year and a half ago, if you'd asked me what a Gaga pit was, I don't think I would have been able to answer that question. But I feel quite well-versed on it right now, and the playground at Northwoods will open with a Gaga pit.
At the end of February, we were able to put together the Northwoods PTO by inviting members of the PTO from the three, three largest feeder schools. And so, that was a time for those parents to share out what had been done at their buildings, what they felt was important, and then ultimately vote on an executive board, which I think we were really nervous about, how that process was going to go. And we had all these scenarios for voting, and, and it ended up kind of just being this really organic conversation, and the people who wanted to, to do certain things were unchallenged. And so, it worked out really lovely. And that board's been meeting since April.
Okay.
One of the most exciting events of the year was the mascot selection. Andrew Hagan and Jeffrey DeMars and I traveled to the three feeder schools with our ballot boxes and our "I voted" stickers. And the students had the opportunity to pick from four different mascots. The Wolf was the clear winner with 70% of the vote, with the Wale coming in a distant second. Very distant.
And so, something else that has been really important to Jenny is just that families and students feel really connected. We don't have a physical space right now to come to and look at, and so, just providing opportunities for people to feel connected to the building and the staff of the building, and to each other. So, on May 6th, the Northwood staff was at the Central Middle School track, and families were invited to come, just for a short time, but to, to go to the, to meet the staff at the grade level their child would be going to. Everybody participated. All the students added their fingerprint to something that's going to be displayed in the school, that our art teacher was putting together. And so, that was just a really nice evening. The ice cream truck was there. Everyone had a good time.
Some updates on the building. We have allocated six different classrooms for every grade level at Northwoods. We currently have three or four sections planned with students, but as we grow, we'll be able to fill those sections quite seamlessly. Furniture delivery actually started two weeks earlier than we originally planned. Furniture started arriving July 1st. Cindy Windsor has been amazing in all her organization and planning and taking on that task. The playground installation started actually in the end of June instead of in July, which was also a nice bonus. So, I feel like we're really ahead of schedule, which is something that we're really excited about. I think our teachers are feeling very comfortable, knowing that they can get into the building quite early in August, have an opportunity to feel settled before the beginning of the school year. And we actually are having our first staff meeting August 14th, so we can have a chance to go over the nuts and bolts of the building before workshop week. Because I think it's important that they have some time to plan and think and get acclimated before all the students come. So, I think we're feeling really good about that.
So, we're about a month out, then, from staff being able to move in, which is two weeks earlier than what we were told in the hiring process. So, that's really exciting. I'm going to be heading the PBIS group at Northwoods, and so, we have some training August 7th and 8th. And we'll be meeting together as a Northwoods cohort just prior to that, to kind of get our bearings and, and thoughts together before we go to that training. Open house will be the week of everyone else, August 28th, and then we're working on a dedication for sometime in the fall. We have a short video.
We have a short video to share with you. Hi, I'm Jenny Berg. I'm the new principal of Elementary School Number Nine, soon to be named something that we're not quite sure of.
To be able to look at a, a farm field, if you will, and see a school building sit there long before the first brick is ordered, it's just incredible.
Woo! Construction is underway on Wayzetta Schools' ninth elementary school, a school that was approved by voters last November. I've told my friends, this is like the biggest present ever. I mean, how do, who gets to hire a whole new staff and have a whole new building and have this opportunity? It's an amazing adventure, and I couldn't be happier. It is official, the Wayzetta District's ninth elementary school has a new name. The new school will be called Northwoods Elementary.
The K-5 facility will open in the fall of 2019.
We will open around 500, and we are built for approximately 900. And so, we will be able to grow as people keep moving into the Plymouth area. Good morning, everyone. My name is Jenny Berg, and I live in the school of Northwoods Elementary School, and I am so happy to see all of your faces.
Cute.
So, that's what we have for you this evening, but we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. It's so exciting.
It is exciting.
To watch how the process has unfolded. Board colleagues, questions or comments? Linda?
Madam, question, just a comment. Thank you for the comments and, and the video and all the preparations you're making. It sounds really exciting.
Thank you.
And then, Mr. Westrom?
Yes, I would like to just make a quick comment to thank Jenny for the work that she's been doing, working with our construction partners and with John Deutsch and his team. And it sounds like everything is coming ahead on schedule. There is one thing that's a little behind, that's the grass, but we've been assured.
Came today.
Huh?
It arrived today.
It arrived today.
Yes.
Yep. So, we believe that it will take root and be ready when this, when the school does open. So, thank you, Jenny, for your good work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Well, thank you both. Thank you, Ashley. Thank you, Jenny, and for all that you've done and, and moving forward. It sounds like August is going to be a busy month for you, and we can't wait to see all of our students coming in.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you. Wow. It's so cool to see how things go. All right. And the next item on our agenda are some administrative recommendations. And the first, from the superintendent, is an update and some action regarding our strategic roadmap.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Within your board packet, you've had an opportunity to review, and you've seen it prior to the board packet being released, but two versions of the recommended changes to the strategic roadmap. And one of those shows the actual changes, the other one does not show the edits. And we've had some discussion about this at a number of school board work sessions. So, the intent for tonight isn't to go through this line by line, which we'll be glad to know, or in great detail. But I think you'll see the reflections that we most recently spoke about. spoke about at the work session. And just to give you a little bit of background, as a reminder to the board and those in attendance tonight and for our viewers, the, this version of the strategic roadmap was first implemented in the 2011, or during the, in 2011, we created a new roadmap. It was reviewed and again approved by the school board in 2015. So this is sort of the third iteration of this version of the roadmap in 2015, and underwent a few very minor changes. And again, this year, I would say the changes being recommended are relatively minor as well. I think that speaks to the fact that the school board and our administrative team feels as though this particular roadmap is serving us well. We did look at a few iterations of our strategic directions and contemplated going from four to three and combining one and two, and then with some further conversation and thought, we decided we kind of liked them more the way that they are, to continue to focus on those four areas: achievement, each and every, personalization, and health and well-being. I do think those are four really important focal points for the school district, and we'll continue to provide a really good direction for our administrative team, our principals, and our staff. And I have to say that I've worked in a number of school districts and places over my career, and the roadmap in this district and our district, I think, is more frequently referred to by staff from all different employee groups. I think that there's a focus on those strategic directions. The mission tagline of excellence for each and every student, we see frequently, and our staff refer to that frequently. Our vision statement, which really is grounded in good research, helps us focus on those three critical areas of exceptional student learning experiences and relationships, which really sort of summarizes our products and services that we deliver and provide for our students and our families. The community trust, confidence, and partnership really speaks to that brand loyalty and that deep commitment that we want for our families to feel about our school district and to feel as though regardless of age or role in the community, or whether they have children enrolled in our pre-K through grade 12 academic setting, or if they're empty nesters, or what I sometimes call never nesters, they've maybe lived in our community, have never had children attend here. We want for our school district to feel as though it belongs to everybody, not only our K-12 students, but our early learners, our adult learners, and our community education programming gives us a great opportunity to be able to deliver to those who aren't currently in grades K through 12. So we really do want for our entire community to feel the Wayzata Public Schools is theirs and that they have a role and a place to play. And then the final leg is the operational excellence component, which is really that sweet spot of efficiency and effectiveness. We want to be efficient with our resources, and I think Jim Westerman, our finance team, and all of our other divisions do a really great job of always focusing on that balance of not being, going on the cheap, so to speak, to scrimp on dollars at the expense of effectiveness and high quality, but to, you know, continuously monitor our funding and our financing and ensure to deliver that high-quality list of products and services for our community and for our students. So I really like our vision statement from that perspective, our mission of excellence for each and every student, and our core values, along with the strategic directions that I referenced before, I think really gives us a powerful tool to continue to build on. In this third version of our strategic roadmap, or our second renewal, but our third version of the roadmap, I think the coming chapters are really going to be focused on trying to better define our strategic directions and creating actions and accountability measures and really tracking progress through well-defined metrics and benchmarks that we think will indicate us achieving our mission, our vision, delivering on our work through our core values, and really moving the needle on those strategic directions. So I'm really excited for the next chapter and look forward to continuing to move forward. So I believe this roadmap that's before you tonight, for your consideration of approving, reflects the conversations we've had in work sessions, and I'm hoping that it'll serve, continue to serve as a great guide as we move forward into the next chapter. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Board colleagues, the recommended action is to approve the strategic roadmap as presented. Is there a motion to that effect?
Aye, so move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Well, I'm very much in favor, but I don't think I've been on any board where the roadmap has been as widely used throughout the enterprise. Often, it's sort of put in a drawer, or a few people know it, and I think a lot of people in our district understand it and know it and work toward it, so I'm very pleased with it. I think I may be the only board member who was part of the original drawing up of that roadmap, so maybe I'm a little biased, but nevertheless, I think it's really good and very useful for us.
Thank you. I just would like to say a couple words of thanks. First, as we started talking about this back in January, I think, at a work session, and at that moment, all of the executive committee and our executive directors and leaders joined us, and it was so fantastic to hear each, how each of the departments, from business and finance, to HR, to technology, to teaching and learning, the specific examples of how each of our departments have realized the roadmap. And so thank you to all of our directors and all of our staff, really. I'll echo what's been said before of everyone talking about how it's a living, breathing document and is really integrated into the work, and that takes a community effort. So thank you to our directors. And also, thank you to Dr. Anderson, the boardsman. We've had lots of conversations. You've helped move us along and keep this process going, and so for your leadership in instilling the values and our mission statement and all that you do, and also for helping the board get to this point, we appreciate it.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Much. Okay, any other? There's a motion on the table, and I don't think it's a roll call. So all in favor of approving?
We do, it is.
I don't have this.
Nope, okay, right. So all in favor of approving the strategic direction as presented? Please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Absention, motion carries. We have a renewed strategic roadmap. Okay, and I think that was all under superintendent evaluation. Mr. Westrum, you had a moment to catch your breath, and now you're back on again.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Just speaking to the roadmap, you're probably aware that the budget that was just approved in June for the fiscal year that started on July 1st for this year actually reflects the values and the vision and the roadmap. So now we're going to go back and look at May's financial report, and if you look at May's financial reports, which are included in your packet, we have a Student Activity Fund Report, an investment summary, an analysis of financial reports, a statement of revenues, and a statement of expenditures. And once again, within this, we're comparing our budget to our actual, and the budget actually was for last year through May, and then the expenditures also, and the revenues through May. I did want to just point out that we typically budget our compensation items, salary and benefits, in totality. So you probably noticed that the salaries were 1% over and the benefits were a couple percent under, so we actually typically will revise those prior to June 30th. So I think the next time that, when you see your final reports, you'll notice that the salary and benefits will come in right in line. But I'm pleased to mention that our budgets, our expenditure budgets are coming in right in line with what we had anticipated. And once again, to speak more to the, my colleagues and our other program managers throughout the district, our budgets reflect our values and our expenditures do as well. So when we need to invest in our programs, we do, but any chance we have to be prudent and frugal, we take advantage of as well. So I think our taxpayers can be very comfortable and have a high level of confidence, as well as the board, that our financial matters are in order. So I'd be happy to take any questions. I would like to just make a remark, that you're probably aware, we have a finance committee of the board, and we do go through those reports in greater detail, so.
Okay, thank you so much, and thank you for that, for that context and some of that understanding. That is really helpful, and it ties very well. Board colleagues, questions or comments? Ms. Polzin?
I just wondered if you have everything all lined up to pull those student activity accounts into the regular budget, and if everybody's on board and ready to tackle that. I know it's going to be not an easy task.
Yes, thank you, Director Polzin and members of the board. You're probably aware that GASB 84 requires school districts to take control of their student activity accounts, and we did pass a resolution in June, and we have actually transferred those resources into the general fund at this point. As a matter of fact, we're going to ask you to approve a resolution regarding the scholarship trust. We were waiting for an opinion from the Commissioner of Education. You're probably aware that the general fund has restrictive purposes. It must serve a public purpose, and we wanted to be certain that we could award scholarships to individuals that were so designated. So I think we're moving ahead quite well. Jamie Sherwood, thanks to his work and his department's work in looking at all the activities and athletics that occur in the district. So I think we're moving ahead quite well in that. So, thank you.
Good to hear. Thank you. Great question. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
Yes, I do have four other items that will require board action, and a couple of those are routine in nature. The first one is to approve the 2020-2029 10-year-long, or 10-year-long-term Facility Maintenance Capital Expenditure Plan. I'm going to ask the board to approve the Wayzata Plan, and then subsequently, I'm going to ask the board to approve the 287 Plan. The 2015 Legislative Session established the Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Revenue Program for School Districts, and this program replaces health and safety revenue, deferred maintenance revenue, and alternative facilities bonding and levy programs. Annually, the district must have a 10-year capital plan adopted by the school board, and you probably are aware that we did a detailed facility analysis in the, well, how do you say, early 2010s or whatever, but right around 2012, 2013, and we've been updating that on an annual basis. We also created a Facility Committee of the Board, and the Facility Committee pays a great deal of attention to the details there. So the recommended action is before you, and we would like you to approve this.
Okay, thank you so much. As in following of the comments, the recommended action is to approve the Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Revenue Program Plan for fiscal years 2020 through 2029, and the district's two-year and 10-year capital expenditure plans. Is there a motion to that effect?
So move.
Second? All right, it's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion, it's a roll call vote.
Yes, all right. Cheryl Polzin, yes. Eric Brown is absent. Linda Cohen?
Yes.
Andrea Keen?
Yes.
Bonita Lucky?
Yes.
Chris McCullough is absent, and Chair Joe Hanson?
Yes.
Okay, passes. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. As I mentioned before, we are a member of Intermediate District 287, and 280, Intermediate District 287 also has a long-term facility maintenance revenue plan for a 10-year period. I believe Andrea Keen was a part of that, and we did, all member district business managers were deeply involved in the analysis, and with a high level of confidence, I can ask you to approve their plan as well. I'm not sure if Andrea would like to make any remarks.
Sure, I can make a quick comment. As a board member for 287, we looked at this resolution in April of this year, and all of the representatives from the member districts looked at it carefully and had a great presentation from their Director of Finance and Business, and we felt confident as the 287 board approving it, and then subsequently goes to all of the member districts for a vote, and so that's what I'm asking you to consider tonight. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Keen.
Okay, so thank you, Mr. Westrum. The recommended action is to approve District 287's Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Capital Expenditure Plan for fiscal years 2021 through 2030, and affirm Wayzata Public Schools' fiscal year 2020 through 2021 portion. Is there a motion to that effect?
Aye, so move. Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. Any discussion? I just will underscore again this conversation, as we, as you've detailed in the last in this, how these sometimes actions look really quick at our meeting, but the conversations that are happening on multiple levels in the Finance Committee and the Facilities Committee, and then at 287, that there's an awful lot that goes into it, and so thank you to all members who are part of that. Okay, any other discussion? It's a roll call vote.
Okay. Linda Cohen?
Yes.
Andrea Keen?
Yes.
Bonita Lucky?
Yes.
Chris McCullough is absent. Cheryl Polzin, yes. And Eric Brown is absent. Chair Joe Hanson?
Yes.
Also passes.
All right, motion carries. There you go. We have a plan.
Thank you very much, and we have a lot of work ahead of us. So the next item is related to GASB 84. As Ms. Polzin indicated, we're implementing the GASB 84, which requires certain counts, specifically scholarship funds, be accounted for and expended in the same manner as other revenues and expenditures of the district. So we are simply asking for you to adopt a resolution to allow us to transfer those dollars out of the trust fund into the general fund.
Okay, thank you. So board colleagues, the recommended action is to adopt the resolution to move the Scholarship Trust Fund to the general fund in accordance with the Government Accounting Standards Board, otherwise known as GASB, Statement Number 84. Is there a motion to that effect?
I would like to move that and ask that we waive the reading of the resolution.
In second.
All right, it's been moved in second. Any discussion? All right, I think we did talk about this before. This process of bringing things back in will be an ongoing conversation, I think, in a number of committees and at this table. Okay, and it's a resolution, so it's a roll call vote?
Yes. Andrea Keen?
Yes.
Bonita Lucky?
Yes.
Chris McCullough is absent. Cheryl Polzin, yes. Eric Brown is absent. Linda Cohen?
Yes.
And Chair Joe Hanson?
Yes.
Okay, also passes.
Okay, great, and one last item.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, we have one last item, and it's calling for a election, a school board election. As you're aware, filings for the November school board election begin on Tuesday, July 30th, and close at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, August 13, 2019. Interested candidates may file at the District Administration Building at 210 County Road 101 North. It is necessary for the school district to hold its general election for the purpose of electing four school board members for terms of four years each. The clerk shall include on the ballot the names of the individuals who file affidavits of candidacy on said general election during the period for filing such affidavits, as though they had been included by name in the attached resolution. So the clerk shall not include on the ballot the names of individuals who file timely affidavits of withdrawal in a manner specified by law. So just as a matter of information, the general election is hereby called and directed to be held on Tuesday, the 5th day of November, 2019, between the hours of 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM. The attached resolution also contains a sample ballot and provides authority to set in motion the various activities required to hold the November 5, 2019, School Board General Election. And I would just like to make a comment that the school district is not seeking to receive voter approval for any additional funding. This is simply a election for school board members. So with that, the resolution is before you.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Westrum. The recommended action, board colleagues, is to adopt the resolution relating to the election of school board members and calling for the school district general election of school board. Is there motion to that effect?
I would like to move and also ask that we waive the reading of the resolution.
Second. All right, it's been moved in second. Any discussion? Once again, as Mr. Westrum mentioned, the only thing on the ballot this November will be for four seats for the school board. Okay, it's a roll call vote.
All right, Bonita Lucky?
Yes.
Chris McCullough is absent. Cheryl Polzin, yes. Eric Brown is absent. Linda Cohen?
Yes.
Andrea Keen?
Yes.
And Chair Joe Hanson?
Yes.
All right, passes.
All right, fantastic. We have a date. Mr. Westrum, you've been very busy. Thank you so much for all that you do from a number of different directions, and now I think we move on to a couple, or to one, human resource recommendation. Thank you, Ms. Boss.
Yes, I have one thing for you this evening. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board.
board. I'm here to share with you the annual supplemental salary recommendations for your approval. You've had all of the details before you to review, but I am going to point out some of the highlights. One thing that I do want to just share for clarity purposes is that supplemental salaries are all of those positions that are not covered under a specific bargaining unit or a specific handbook. So, we have some significant or some changes to our reserve teacher pay and our LPN and RN substitute categories. And we needed to look at making some modifications to their daily rates of pay in an effort to remain competitive and to compensate them for the, the work that they are doing and that we are in need of. You'll see in our activity fund, in those positions, because those wages are dictated from, by the teacher contract, we were just doing updates to those hourly rates to reflect the current curriculum writing rate. Our community education services hourly rates received a 2% increase, which is in alignment with the salary increases that we proposed and our other bargaining units have negotiated. And then we're looking at the early learning school, which is Peppermint Fence, which is our preschool care. And they received a 4% pay increase this year in an effort to keep them competitive in an alignment with salaries in our neighboring districts. You'll also see that we did move the Peppermint Fence manager out of this supplemental salary schedule and moved them into the unaffiliated handbook in an effort to create alignment with like positions. So, this evening, I am just asking you to approve those salary increases, or feel free to ask questions if you have any thoughts or concerns.
All right. Thank you so much, and thank you for that context. Board colleagues, the recommended action is to approve the 2019-2020 supplemental salaries as recommended. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion or questions? Ms. Keane?
I just would like to thank Ms. Voss, because I think what this recommended action shows is that she's very committed to making sure we always have teachers in our classrooms, which is very important. So, I think that this shows that we're really dedicated to making sure that our substitute pay is competitive, and that we can be sure to have a quality teacher in the classroom all the time. So, thank you so much for your work on that. Thank you for your kind words.
Well, and I would add that as we go back to our strategic roadmap and, and our strategic directions that we just talked about, our strategic directions also talk about the health and wellbeing of students, and excellence for each and every, and, and making sure that we have our students ready for third grade. And so, if we think about also what goes into a healthy classroom, and healthy students who are able to be successful, that connects with what they're about, about their health, and, and our nursing staff, and our early childhood, and, and our technology. And so, thank you again for, so, for being acutely aware of what's happening in our community, what the needs of our district are, and then prudent to make good decisions to make sure that we walk that balance of operational excellence.
And I just want to state that probably one of the ways that we make our employees feel valued is that recognition of their salary and recognizing the hard work that they do. And we really do recognize the work that our reserve teachers bring to Wayzata. A lot of our work is done during the school day, where teachers need to engage in professional development, or have other things that happen in their lives. And we really do count on having an excellent group of reserve teachers to step in and pick up. And they've been doing a great job, and we appreciate their services.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Okay. The recommended action is before you, which is to approve the 2019-2020 supplemental salaries as recommended. All in favor of approving the recommended action, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Absention. Motion carries. All right. Thank you so much. That concludes our administrative reports, which brings us to a board report, our board reports. And I have one board report for you this evening. And this is to, just once again, as, as we just called for the election and, and approved the rec, the resolution for the school board election, I just wanted to update the public on our work to get ready for said school board election. So, just a reminder that school board candidate, the candidate filing period is from July 30th to August 13th, right? You do the filing at the District Administration Building, which is 210 County Road 101. And there is a fee of $2 to do those filings. For anyone who is interested in running for the school board, there's, there, there's an awful lot that goes into the work that we do beyond our meetings here on the second Monday of the month, and our work sessions on the fourth Monday of the month. And if you would like to learn more about that, there will be two candidate information sessions. Those will also be held at the District Administration Building at 210 County Road 101. One will be on July 22nd at 7:00 PM. That information session will be directly following our July work session. The second candidate information session will be held on July 20th at noon. So, if you, July 20, 30, July 30th at noon, I'm sorry. Did I say that wrong? July 22nd at 7:00 PM, July 30th at noon. So, if you're interested in doing that, or if you have any additional questions regarding the school board election or, or filing as a candidate, please feel free to call the District Administration Office, and we'll make sure to get that information to you. Okay. Any other board reports? No. And it's time for the audience opportunity to address the board. I don't think we've had anyone make a request. So, that brings us to, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
All right. The Wayz, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The Wayzata Public Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting for Monday, July 8, 2019, is adjourned.